Good afternoon, welcome to the regular meeting of council of November the 17th, 2020. Meeting called to order. We'll have a moment of silence. Okay, approval of the agenda?
Motion moves by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on November 17th, 2020, beginning at 4:40 PM, be approved as circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item three, in the disclaimer of pecuniary interest. Counselor Owen?
Yes, I'm declaring pecuniary interest on item 12.3, which directly relates to me in the open meeting, and item 13.4 in the closed meeting, which also directly relates to me.
Duly noted, thank you, Counselor Owen. Petitions and delegations? None noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations, we have a motion?
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council accept the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held November 3rd, 2020.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications, 6.1 COVID update. We'll start with the CIO Rick McGee.
Thank you, worship, through you to council. In watching the premier's addresses over the last number of weeks, we've seen a sharp increase in the number of COVID cases recorded across the provinces as well as across the nation. And that does give rise to concern that the COVID-19 virus is spreading rapidly in a number of areas, Toronto, York, and Peel regions more specifically. But it shows just how quickly it can increase when proper procedures aren't put in place. And while Northern Ontario has done an extremely good job, we can't take that for granted. So a renewed vigor toward vigilance as we approach the Christmas season and the lead up to Christmas over the next six weeks to remember to wear masks, practice social distancing, stay away from others not in your bubble when you don't have to be in other places, continued hand washing, hygiene, and continue to protect yourselves and each other to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And I'd ask Ms. Zach Ryder to provide an update from the facility's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. The town of Kirkland Lake has been working closely with public health to ensure that all of the programs and facilities that are open to the public are so and doing under the various directives. In the area of recreation, the ice, pool, and fitness areas are all open with various restrictions in place. We're pleased to announce that walking in the arena will begin tomorrow. Specific times will be available, and there will be advance booking. We anticipate rolling out public skating in the next week after confirmation by public health on protocols. For all activities in the community complex, active screening is required, which means that you physically fill out a screening form or you use a QR code inside the front doors. A mask must be worn at all times except during the actual times of activity, and physical distancing is mandatory. If residents are visiting other buildings in the town of Kirkland Lake, they are reminded that masks must be worn prior to entering the building. Self-screening is to be completed prior to entering. And if the individual answers yes to any of the questions, they are to return home and contact an assessment center for further direction. Physical distancing is the most important step in ensuring transmission does not occur, and all residents are reminded to keep two meters from those not in their household at all times. We do thank the residents and the staff for doing their part when accessing our services. It is these steps along with avoiding social gatherings and limiting close contacts to those outside of our household that will help bend the curve and stop the spread of the virus.
Thank you, Ms. Zach Ryder, your worship. That concludes the staff update. We're happy to answer any questions council may have.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Ms. Zach Ryder, is there any update on rec hockey?
Yes, we did discuss with the senior medical officer last week about the shinny type hockey, which includes rec hockey. So right now, the province feels that there are some concerns with hockey, and we are waiting for their guidance on that. So they've recommended at this time that we don't go further into recreational type shinny hockey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor White?
Yeah, sorry, it'll be for you. Can we have a refresher on the rules for pool and ice private rentals, sorry?
Yes, so pool private rentals are, they are allowed at this point. We are working at a 75% reduction of capacity limit. So for example, the leisure pool typically has 100 people. So we're working around 25 unless we reduce some of the features. We can get it up to about 30. So it depends on what people are looking for. We can't host a social function outside of the pool. So if it was a birthday party, we are no longer doing the cake, the ice cream type birthday party in the rooms, but we can do a pool rental. For ice, we have not gone into ice rentals as of yet. Out of interest sake, we've had, we had a call from the city of Timmins this morning, who did start with ice rentals. They were trying to put in all their protocols. They have had a lot of problems because people are believing it's still pre-COVID times, and they aren't able to keep themselves in the distance on the ice. So they were trying to find out what other rinks were doing because they were going to pull back. So it is a little difficult because different municipalities under different health units are interpreting the guidelines or applying them slightly differently. So our approach is we run everything through public health. We get their guidance on everything, and they're basing it on the directives from the province. So we're pretty confident we're doing things safely, and we're allowing things to open on a rolling out type approach.
Thank you.
Okay.
No further comments, that's it? We have a motion?
Motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal update titled COVID-19 update be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2, with reference to the vacant council seat. Megan Elliott, could you give us some information on that, please?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. Last council meeting, we declared the seat vacant and referred the same report back to this meeting for council discussion on next steps for filling the vacant seat. So the information is presented before you, and I'm here if you have any questions and discussions.
Open for discussion, council? Counselor Ivanoff?
I think, I mean, you have an election. I think the next person that's on the, on the list, on the, that have the most number of votes should probably be the person that it's offered to, provided they're interested in, in sitting on council. I'm not sure, I know it's Lab Shaba, but I'm not sure if he's still interested, or maybe he's changed his mind since that time. But I would thank that if the electorate has chosen somebody, then it's not up to us to try and find an alternate. Just my comments.
Would you like to update that aspect of it?
Through you, your worship, to council. I did receive correspondence from Mr. Shaba saying that he would be interested if council decides to go that way.
Counselor Owen?
I agree with Counselor Ivanoff on this one. It's democratic process. We didn't get to pick who sits around the table right now. If we did, maybe the results would be different. But that was the next person on the list, and he, the seat should be offered to Lab if he's interested.
Counselor White?
Obviously, I agree with both council members that have already spoken. We did get to vote and make a choice in 2018, and the next person should be the one that takes Dennis's seat. If it was up to me, his seat would sit empty, but it's definitely not up to me. So hopefully, the next person that sits with us will be a positive addition.
I agree with fellow council members. Mr. Shaba went through the process, put his name up for election, received, I think, over 1,000 votes, was pretty close to that. So I think people did make a decision, and we have to respect that, as you said, Counselor Ivanoff. And I fully support bringing Lad Shaba on this for the vacant council seat. Would somebody like to make a motion, Counselor Ivanoff?
I make the motion that we invite Lab Shaba to sit on council and to finish out Dennis's term, which would be 2022.
Can we have a second, please? Seconded by Casey Owens. Any further discussion? None noted, all in favor? Motion carried. Welcome, Lad Shaba. At least the offer to him. Item 6.3, the RFO to do with the disposal of scrap metal at the landfill site. Mr. Charbonneau?
Good afternoon, everybody. Through you, your worship, to council. Before you, his report for the sale and disposal of scrap metal at the Kirkland Lake landfill site. Typically, we go out every fall for quotations on potential purchasers for the scrap metal. This year, we, we went out and received one bid for $75 a ton from Premier Recycling in Timmins. There's an estimated 150 tons of scrap metal currently piled at the landfill. So if we, if we go through and allow them to purchase the scrap metal, we're looking at a revenue around $11,000. Should we decide not to do that? There's no guarantee what the prices are going to be in the future. It's all, it's a commodity price that reflects the markets. And there's lots going on in the world today that fluctuates those markets, such as, you know, stockpiled quantities around the world, oil prices, tariffs, et cetera. It's in line with our strategic plan for sustainable service delivery and core service strategic priorities. Any questions?
For curiosity, Mr. Charbonneau, how many bids did we get? Was there a lot of interest, or?
We received one on time, and we see one that was late. We've done business many, many, many times with Premier Recycling. We've always been very good. We've always received payment in a timely fashion. So they, they are a legitimate, good company to work with.
Well, I think too, Mr. Charbonneau, there's not a lot of people in the scrap metal business these days like there used to be, so.
Not to this magnitude, no.
I think your recommendation is reasonable. Any further comments or questions from council? None noted, do we have a motion?
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2020-dev-057 entitled Award of RFQ 56020, Sale and Disposal of Scrap Metal at Landfill be received? That council hereby awards RFQ 560-20 Sale and Disposal of Scrap Metal at Landfill to Premier Recycling Timmins in the amount of $75 per ton. And that staff is hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to complete the terms of RFQ-560-20.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.4, Agreement of Collection of Used Consumer Type Portable Batteries. Ms. McNaughton?
Thank you, your worship, through to council. I'm here to request permission to present a bylaw at the next meeting to enter into an agreement with Call to Recycle Canada, Inc. for the recycling of our household batteries. So basically, the Stewardship Ontario is no longer funding this through the material hazardous waste program. They are pushing this back to the producers. So the individual producer responsibility is now on those people who are creating the batteries, like Duracell and Energizer. And what they'll do is contract out a pro, which is our Call to Recycle, to collect on their behalf. So Call to Recycle has sent us the agreement, and they're proposing fees here, 55 cents per kilogram and $1.20 per kilogram during hazardous waste event days. So this is something that we would actually see a revenue from, whereas right now, we actually don't. So we are collecting batteries. It would be the same hauler and collector who is doing, doing it currently. We would just see a bit of money come back from it. There, there is potential for having to pay for it if the battery loads are contaminated with garbage or batteries that aren't part of the program. So an increased advertising would be necessary for this, just to ensure that we're not paying anything.
Could you point out the, the drop off depots that we have within the community?
Yes, so we do have, right now, there's one at Town Hall, the Complex Public Works. And then I do also have a drop off with the fire department and the OPP who use the system as well.
I believe the hospital, they were accepting them as well. I don't know if that's still.
I do believe there's a couple, such as Home Hardware as well, that is collecting them. But it is separate from what our program is. So what the hospital does is separate from our program.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? None noted? We have a motion to accept that report?
Motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2020-dev-059 entitled Agreement for Collection of Used Consumer Type Portable Batteries be received? And that staff be directed to prepare and present a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Call to Recycle Canada, Inc. for the collection of used consumer type portable batteries?
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. McNaughton. Item 6.3, Letter of Interest for commit, to commit funding from the Central Ortho Photography Project 2021. Ms. Billard?
Thank you, worship, through you to council. We received some correspondence from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry that they are going to be hosting or setting up an aerial photography project for 2021. So this is a project that the town has undertaken in 2016 and 2011. Essentially, they do a six-centimeter contour image of all of the areas that we would like in our district or outside of our district. I think in 2016, we also included the watershed of Polley. And essentially, we would take that image and put it into our CGIS system and be able to use it to populate various databases that we have access to. So what they're looking for right now is a letter of intent to say that we are willing to participate in the program. The costs are roughly going to be, based on the budgeted amount, $1,400. It has the ability to go up or down depending on how many people are going to sign up for the program. We do not necessarily have to do anything with it right now. We did just want to confirm that we are intending to proceed. We can decide later on, once the price has been confirmed, whether you want to not participate. We will not need to budget this until 2022. So it is, it is a financial commitment for the 2022 budget that we are going to be, if we were to sign up for this project. So we don't get aerial imagery any other way. This is typically how it's done. We do have the ability to check Google Earth, so a lot of people will use that database. The one thing to remember is that that database can't be taken cheaply and modified into our CGIS database and used to populate with our shape files for property fabrics and, and all the other layers that we have. So this is a really good inefficient, or sorry, efficient and cheap way to, to get the aerial photography for our systems. So we are recommending that we do proceed with signing a letter of intent for this project.
Comments from council? Well, certainly for $1,400, we, we get our money's worth. Motion?
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2020-dev-060 entitled Letter of Intent to Commit Funding to the Central Ortho Photography Project 2021 be received? That council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby commits to allocate funding to the Ontario Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for the Central Ontario Ortho Photography Project 2021 in an amount not to exceed $2,000 to be placed in the 2022 budget, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the letter of intent?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.6, Code of Conduct, Building Officials' Policy Review. Ms. Billard?
Thank you, worship, through you to council. And to remain consistent with our strategic priority of reviewing a policy per council meeting, we are presenting you with the Code of Conduct Building Officials' Policy Review. This is one that was passed originally in 2018 and is a requirement under the Building Code Act. We have had our CBO, Mr. Moore, and our building official and property standards officer, Ms. Nyland, review this policy and make suggested changes. So those are presented in the document attached, so nothing major. We did add some enforcement provisions in there. So if there is some issues with our, the code of conduct with our building officials, we do have some mechanisms there on how to, how to deal with those situations. So again, here, if there's any questions or concerns regarding the policy, but otherwise, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
None noted, motion?
Motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2020-dev-058 entitled Code of Conduct, Building Officials' Policy Review be received? That council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby approves the revised code of conduct for building officials as presented?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item seven, Consideration of Notices of Motion, none noted. Item eight, Introduction Reading and Consideration of Bylaws. We have a motion?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto? Bylaw number 20-072, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of Part 1 54R-6159, a property located adjacent to 26 Dixon Avenue to Theodore and Brenda Bukowski.
Any comments? None noted? All in favor? Motion carried. Item number nine, Questions from Council to Staff, none noted? Notice of motions, none noted? Counselors' reports, item 11.1. Counselor Owen?
As everyone knows, recently, I was the subject of an integrity commissioner's report. I know that I have made mistakes during my first two years on council. When the residents of Kirkland Lake elected me to represent them on council and made the decision for me to speak on their behalf, I decided I would not be the typical politician. I decided I would ask questions in the way I have always asked questions. I would use straightforward language. Now I have learned, and in a bureaucratic system, this is not acceptable. So now, I will still ask questions, but I will ask them using language that is acceptable within a bureaucratic system. During my 35-year career as a journalist, I often had private conversations. There was an unstated understanding that private conversations would be kept private. I have learned the hard way, the same is not true for counselors. I have made changes, so this will not happen going forward. I was shocked to find out how many people were eavesdropping on my private conversations. Again, I have made changes, so this won't happen in the future. I apologize to Ms. Zach Ryder and any other staff members that my words, tone, or facial expressions hurt or caused them to take offense. I have taken steps to correct my behavior, and I will continue working to bring positive change to the residents of Kirkland Lake. The difference is, I will do this in a new, different, and creative way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. I know it's from the heart. I know you never make comments maliciously. We all learn from our experiences, and we appreciate you being a stand-up person and recognizing the situation and looking to make more positive change forward. So on behalf of council, thank you. Any other comments from counselors? I've got one note. Congratulations at Kirklin and District Hospital, or I guess it's called the Blanch River Hospital now with the merging with Ingelhart, in their Trillium Gift Award for their outstanding commitment to saving lives through the gift of organs and tissue donations and trans, transplantation. You can help save lives just by registering on www.viadonor.ca. This is the third year in a row that the Kirkland Lake District Hospital has had 100% rating. So this is fantastic. A lot of hard work goes into it, and it means a lot to the community. And they deserve a big pat on the back, excuse the pun. Any other comments from council, none noted? Motion?
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number 12, broadband, MPP John Vanthoff correspondence. I did have the opportunity, if I may speak on behalf, I did have a discussion with the MPP Vanthoff. And while there, there was a substantial commitment from the province, I think in the amount of 500, or 500 million to provide broadband to every community, every resident in the country over a two or three-year period, which he was very happy to, to hear. His private members bill was written before that announcement. But one of the things that he emphasized in his, and it's noted in his correspondence to council, is the fact, this has happened in the past where the party in power has committed dollars to, in the amount of, the last time was $40 million, and it never got spent. So what he's trying to do is make the province commitment to ensure that it does happen. And he's asking for our municipality's support in way of a resolution, which we could possibly bring back at the next council meeting. If that's makes sense with you. If that's makes sense with you. Megan? We don't have a resolution today, do we?
Your worship, if council chooses, they can present a motion if they wish.
Okay. So in our resolution, you can get the proper wording, but basically is to support the request for support to bill number 226, the broadband. That broadband is an essential service, which is being, I think it's being presented, has been presented for first reading. So that will take in all people within the province. Now, just to comment, the fact that it's gone to first reading, he wasn't concerned that we're late getting into the process because it has to have three readings anyway. So the more support he gets along the way is is what he's looking for. Councillor White?
Also move that this council present a resolution to support bill number 226, the broadband as an essential service supporting John Vanthoff at next council.
Yep, I second that.
Okay. Motion by Councillor White, seconded by Councillor Ivanoff. Do you want to read that back? Madam Clerk?
Through you, your worship, to councillor White. I'm going to include to receive the document, okay? So be it resolved that the correspondence from MPP John Vanthoff be received and that staff be directed to present a resolution to support bill 226, broadband as an essential service.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 12.2, AMO Conference Follow-Up Correspondence from Solicitor General Sylvia Jones. Any further comments? Counselors had an opportunity to read that. Under Correspondence. Motion to receive.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the correspondence from Solicitor General Sylvia Jones be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 12.3 Integrity Commissioner Report. This report is in part of the communication file or agenda file. Is there any further discussion required or any comments that any of the councillors would like to make? None noted? We can defer this to during the closed session that we're going to be going into. Does somebody want to make a motion, defer it to after? Okay, councillor White? And councillor Ivanoff?
So moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that item 12.3 be deferred until after closed session.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion to move into a closed session?
Motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section 239-2 to discuss one land disposition matter, one labor relation matter, and one matter that is subject to client solicitor privilege.
All in favor? Motion carried. We'll take a five-minute break.
So matters, 14 matters from a closed session?
To you, your worship, acting your worship, I have a motion from myself and seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that councillor Rick Owens remuneration in accordance with bylaw 20-005 be suspended for 30 days as a penalty for being found to have contravened multiple sections of the Town and Kirkland Lake Council Code of Conduct as outlined by the Integrity Integrity Commission Report as presented October the 20th at the regular meeting of council. And that the 30-day remuneration suspension occur from November the 18th to December 17th, 2020. That last part, we're going to leave out. I think the fact that Mr. Owen has already apologized verbally is not required. So that's the end of the the motion. Any comments from councillors? I do appreciate the fact that Rick apologized. It was the right thing to do. He's a stand-up guy, as I said. It's unfortunate we're going this further step. It does sound a little heavy penalty to pay. But I think we have to send the right message to to our staff and the rest of council that we carry on business in a respectable manner. The fact that the complaint was almost a 10-month period makes it a little more serious than than the normal code of conduct complaint. So I, well, I feel for Mr. Owen, councillor Owen. I think it's a great thing, great message that we have to send.
Any other comments or question? All in favor?
I agree.
Carry. To have finished a meeting. Do you want me to finish a meeting? We'll just wait for councillor Owens to come, Owen to come back in. I almost called myself. I almost. Yeah. I refrain from comments. Confirmation by law?
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number 20-088, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held November 17th, 2020.
All in favor? Carry. Adjournment?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council adjourn the November 17th, 2020, regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Carry.